Everybody has, but we have a responsibility to all of you.
Which would free up resources then to be able to actually take care of people that have the defect adjustments that we really need to address and help out.
So then how do we follow up on that? Because like, oh, I didn't want my pool, even though I really did, that's like a broken line or something of that nature.
Is there documentation to get any of that to come along with this?
There's documents.
Because like, right after...
They have the line.
Yeah, he's not sure what he did.
Yeah, this guy has no idea what he did. And that's the only thing, it's like, that kind of scares me.
I know.
So, I feel like you'd be tightening this up and saying, if you did this, what is the receiving documentation that shows that?
Perhaps, I mean, we have on here that they sign and they certify that what they're testing to is true. Maybe we should sort of have defined if what they are testing to is not true, and that might deter anybody from making...
Because last month, we have a pool incident that the pool was on one of their... The case of the mystery pool, I mean.
Yeah.
Who would...
The dead grass.
Yeah. Who would be around to take it?
You're like, there's no money, kind of, Tom.
That's all I care about. Money, I want money. Everybody wants money.
You know how you're gonna pay for anything to die?
Oh, I thought that was good.
I could hear your hamster wheels spinning in there, don't you?
But that's good feedback. But that, I think, that, we're in the right team then, as we look ahead.
Right.
To do the ordinance and that, those kind of conversations are worth having, figuring out, doing, yeah, they are, they can be addressed, so to a level of degree, so.
Okay, so, with that being said, I do have two applications for sitter adjustments.
What was the three?
One is for Don Owen, and he had the loss, and it occurred through a water main break, and he replaced the water line from the house to the meter. So, I make a recommendation that we accept this application we give Don Owen to avail of for each, the adjustment should sure.
Have we not seen this name before? Has this name not come across yet?
Do we, did we check that, see how many of them have?
I really did, okay, I don't recall the name. Do you guys ever get that?
I don't recall.
The names aren't really...
Yeah, it has, yeah.
I don't recall it.
Because when I first saw Don Owen, I was thinking of another Don, not Story. But then I went, oh, that's not that Don, it's a different Don. I know, I've seen this name before.
If it's possibly... They can apply for in the water department, if they've already got one, we'll turn it in.
Okay. But it is possible that it's been, it could be under a different conversation.
So, we're good with it?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, sure, can we have a check them out?
Send their back and all that. I'm thinking.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And Gerald Pyron of West Smith, he had the loss, and it was either due to human error or valve leaking, and remedy to repair, I guess, to replace the shut-off valve. I don't believe that there's enough information on this one to approve this. So, I recommend that we deny this application for Gerald Pyron at West Smith.
I accept that.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Okay, the last thing that I need to discuss, and bring before the council for approval, is to raise the trash rate to the public, one dollar fifty. And this is because our rates were raised with republic. And rates, I mean, it's suspected that things are not going to stay the same, the cost of everything goes up, the cost of transportation, fuel, taxes, equipment, tires, vehicles, everything has gone up, wages have increased, you know, the cost of their equipment and everything has increased. So, they, they have to push that increase, obviously, on the consumers who is, and that does, and then we have to, you know, we have no choice but to put it on to citizens. And we have, we've kept the price down, the cost of that increase down as much as we can. That's one reason why we had to let go of the churches and the library and all of those in an attempt to keep the price down to the public as much as possible. And so, my recommendation is an increase of a dollar fifty cents with the promise that it will not go up for the next four years.
So, it's a lock rate for four years?
A lock for four years.
When was the last time we had this? Do you happen to know that?
Probably...
It was obviously pre, so how long, how long have we had the rate that we have now, since we, since we brought on Republic?
I would say probably around some sort of ten months.
How long has that been?
Four, four years.
Four years. So, we've had the same price for four years? This is the first increase we've seen in four years?
Correct.
When do you want to spend time?
Immediately, because we're already feeling it. I mean, we're already paying the increase.
Like tomorrow, or like next month when the bills are sent out?
I would say, I know.
I mean, I don't know why I'd do that.
You put it on the new water bill.
On the next water bill?
On the next water bill? Yes, okay, on the next water bill.
And the main reason we stayed with Republic versus this point is because we had a current contract with them, they did a good job, rather than start the process over in May or...
Right.
We're buying out everybody, you can't, we're just huge. I'll tell you this, like, a dollar fifty may sound a little bit high, but I've talked to a couple other comparative towns, actually, that's a pretty good deal what we're getting for ours compared with other towns. I won't mention that there's a town to the left of us that has well off to do with the trash. So, we should be blessed, to be honest. So, I've been talking to a lot of...
Okay, I need, I need that motion.
I'll take that.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
May I follow up?
Thanks for your time. Uh, attorney, yes, uh... Public affairs, ironically, it didn't plan it this way, didn't pick it up this way. Gerald Pyron bought a piece of land from the city of Benton. His prior, he was going to meet the Trellis for the park, and it was a piece of property that literally we couldn't give away, but he wanted to pay us a hundred dollars, and we took him. And he had cleared that area out, I mean, it looks like a mini park. So, the thing about Gerald Pyron, there's a lot of people that are always, they're asking all the commissioners, you know, is there anything we can do for Benton? We can lock for Benton. And if he's not living, if he gets a chance to describe the Trellis, we'll see right or left, which is the direction he's going in. And you will see, he's got a couple crosses, he's a religious man, he's got a couple crosses on his land, and if you go by or something strange, you don't hear any power tools. He's done overhand, he's a senior citizen, and I, you know, hats off to Gerald Pyron, so. And he was, he is proud, and still is proud, to get that piece of land. So, you know, go by honk at him, wait, he'll appreciate it. So, part B, discussion and approval of mandating the ordinance nineteen twelve for libiting razor wire. Is, is there any minister David Garavilla here? I wonder...
David, would you like to just give a brief update on that, please?
Basically, I'd like to maybe start out with an example here of you folks. Some of us might have been still in diapers or learning how to walk back in nineteen eighty-eight. Illinois required age testing before he got married. Marriage license was fifteen dollars, and age test was four hundred dollars. There was about thirty marriages in Franklin County that year compared to two hundred to three hundred. And that law was repealed twelve months later, and people started getting married again in Illinois. Illinois legislature and the governor had good intentions without the desired results. People went up elsewhere to save four hundred dollars. Illinois lost revenue, West Catherine gained six thousand marriages, Kaduka Kentucky marriages more than doubled. And this ordinance here on this Cassentine wire, this razor wire, it needs to be revised to accept industrial-free zoning areas, and it also needs to be revised to exempt governmental entities. Their juvenile facility in the city of Benton, Illinois, has twelve-foot razor wire on the west and at least north side, possibly the backside, it is near a railroad track. I three is like Illinois asphalt, it's on a railroad track. Tried a case once, a jury trial, trespass on a railroad, the penalty for that is a fine not less than one hundred dollars. So, I mean, if somebody's gonna be trespassing on a railroad, I don't know how, and why no asphalt's gonna protect their property, other than with the razor wire, you can talk to them and whatnot. I guess they could hire armed guards, that seems pretty futile. They're a good employer in the community, they are an industrial area. People's Bank is now in compliance, that razor wire is gone, we're gonna satisfy the desire of several individuals on that. But it just doesn't make real sense, and apparently, no juvenile has ever been injured from escaping from the juvenile detention center. In fact, several of them escaped, and they didn't even know they were gone for about thirty minutes. Now, it's easy to fix a mistake, that's why I was talking to you guys about fixing a mistake. He was elected by the majority of the voters, you folks represent the city of Benton, the interest of the city of Benton, and not the interest of a few select individuals who may have ulterior motives, goals, or elevated agendas. And we'd like to accept this I three zoning, and also governmental entities, having included the federal courthouse, we're not gonna tell them folks they're not gonna have razor wire. Accept the juvenile detention center. So, let's think about the role of me in the city, let's do the right thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, very good, very good intention. Glad I was up.
Yeah, that's, that's time, could you type it as little work as you can?
Is there any questions or any discussion?
I, I just speak with David Krueger, and he, he talked to me about what a hardship it would be to remove twenty-one hundred feet of sand, and that's how, how much sand that he has there. And it's, it's there for the protection of over four million dollars worth of vast sand. And on, on the roadside, that is, you know, there's none of that kind of wire there on the roadside, it just has barbed wire, but the roadside is all lit up. The, where the, where this Cassentine wire is, is around an area that is very, very dark, the backside where the railroad track is and, and all of this, and you, anybody has to be totally trespassing to get anywhere near this, this wire anyway. And in thirty-plus years, he's never had an incident of anybody being injured, so, I'm excited for that one.
So, we need a motion to amend nineteen twelve ordinance to allow the specific wire in the I three zoning area along with governmental, if someone makes that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Please, second.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Part C is discussion and approval of bid for the demo of two oh three East Taker Street and four eleven North Buchanan Street. Again, zoning administrator David Garavilla has been working relentlessly on these demos, and he's making tremendous progress.
I'd like to have those, those would be good for about maybe first. We're gonna have that money this year.
We understand that.
Forty thousand, so I'll just get things set up.
It'd be like a lay-in waiting. I mean, yeah, whenever we get the money, we'll just give them a good pension. So, I take it.
I've got five lines up for you on that.
Yeah.
In the, in the September first February.
You need a motion to approve the...
Okay, so the motion to approve the two oh three East Taker Street complex?
Oh, make a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And then circling on to the four eleven North Buchanan Street, motion to smash that one.
Oh, like another motion.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Can we get, can I interject something, Robert?
Don't be knocked, you go ahead.
I'm going to. I was like, my, my majority, my authority, it's pieces. But I think it'd be nice to have maybe a before and after picture of like each one. I've taken pictures of four, I think, and stuff, and I think that'd be neat for my bit on the west side, I think that'd be really, because let me, I can put them on there, I'll give a...
And then have, we have like a city map, maybe like a little...
No, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
I think that'd be cool. We'll do that for about three years, and four months, four and a half, so.
And Commissioner Garavilla, zoning administrator Garavilla and I have, we surfed through the city, and we have picked out houses that we consider really ones that are disrupting beautiful neighborhoods, and neighborhoods that people are trying to keep their houses presentable, and also houses that are harmful to the, to the city, and believe it or not, some people reside in those houses and there's some wild one jungles. David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your work, again, has been perfection. Thank you.
You're a team builder.
Yes, I mean, you're, this is a driving force, and it's wonderful. Thank you. Now, on to the fun stuff. Part D, discussion and or approval of spending trick-or-treat hours. Now, we have a history here of people that wants to trick-or-treat up until the midnight hour, you know? And in the past, we've tried to restrict it to a time period where most folks are still up, and most folks are, are still wanting to receive trick-or-treats. So, the time in the past has been from five PM to eight PM on, is it Halloween this year?
This year it will be.
Actually, we're gonna trick-or-treat on Halloween, which is really kind of unusual. The thing's changed since the day that David and I grew up, and Lincoln still is.
We started October first.
Yeah. So, the suggestion commentary is five days, discussion and approval.
It's school night, so I think that's, you know, we wouldn't need to have an age limit.
Yeah, because they've stuck them together every year.
Where they just people come out and you're sad to be in their thirties.
So, right? But then, do they, can I show a range of your work?
No.
I mean, make a motion October thirty-first, five to eight, for Halloween this year?
That's what I could.
Which option do you have?
The one with the turkey match.
Mr. Garavilla?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Pergin?
Yes.
Mr. Merschel?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes, I want to know if I'll, if I'll hug your leather.
You're gonna be buckly.
I'm always passing from, Paul, I'm the mayor.
Part E is discussion and approval of airport board recommendations. The airport board is a unique board, it serves a great purpose to the city. When I came on as mayor, it was, I was confused until I started researching, actually, the city of Benton is in control of the airport. So, that was clarified and, and as we got over that, huh? The aeronaut department and the Illinois Department of Transportation, aeronaut department, they actually allotted us a certain amount of money each year for improvements, and we had to petition them for whatever improvements we need. In the past, we have petitioned them for, uh, been through the, and the hangars, I think was the one before I came on, and things of that nature. In the, in the time period allotting all this stuff, we rented out, or leased, excuse me, leased out a, a lot of land out there to be farmed. When that contract expires, my suggestion is that we use that area for events. The event I'm talking about is ones that the people in Springfield, Illinois Department of Transportation, aeronaut department, actually, actually encouraged the city of Benton to have events out there. We were under, I was under the impression, you couldn't have anything out there. So, one day, we called up in the, in the city company car, which is kind of fancy, we drove it up to the airport, and met with the, have scheduled meetings, aeronaut department. They, they took us in like an adopted puppy, and they, they like it, they want us to use the airport to the advantage of Benton and the region. Very few cities have airports, and the policy thing about our airport is that we're looking forward to making a tremendous amount of changes to benefit Benton and the area. One major change that's will happen, we're working on today as we speak, will happen, the, the contract's been let almost, yeah, we're gonna replace the, the terminal, which is actually disintegrating. If you walk into it and lean against the wall, you, you fall out right into the grass, it's very interesting. It's aged, it needs to be replaced, so we're gonna replace it with a sitter V R terminal. People are gonna say, what are you doing that for? We don't, airplanes don't even land out there. No wonder, because I'm going down here a list, and we have two fantastic board members, Matthew Harrison and Garrett Cogger. We're gonna appoint another board member, bring in the three, which is what our statutes regulate. What, what we're doing in the future is we're looking into with, and we're gonna get this done, we're gonna have a flight training school out there, there's possibility of building some pods out there to house people, possibility of a lot of things out there, working with Mr. Rachel on that, a lot of the events we can have, and we might have to have some events with the, the ongoing construction of the courthouse. So, there's so many possibilities out there, it's wonderful. And actually, George Harrison's out there, and everybody wants to see George. So, what the recommendation is, is I'm gonna leave a few in lock, Carol, what they recommend is, Mr. Casey, who is the president, uh, board manager at the, at the airport, is very knowledgeable in, in flight, and we've got like a broken hangar door, and we've got a problem with our aviation fuel storage tank. Most airports have an automated fuel tank where people can fly in, use their credit cards, swipe their credit cards, fill their plane, pull up fuel, and take off. That's something you look into. Okay, so, that's one recommendation is, and the storage tank hose is actually disintegrating to the point where when somebody's taking aeronautic fuel, that the hose could blow, and the fuel could run out of the hose and cause it to have to be sold. What we're doing is upgrading things that are really necessary to upgrade. In the midst of this, you may ask, where's the money coming from? The money's is coming from the aeronaut department of the United States through the state of Illinois. It, it, we're not spending any tax dollars of any citizens in Benton. Another thing is that they, they also want us to have a, a, a car out there, a transportation out there twenty-four seven, which we have, you know, police cars that we can put out there, paint it up, maybe like an aeronautical type car with wings on it, make it cool, you know? Everybody will think that's something different. And Commissioner Story is like, he had a car picked out for us originally, and we don't have any...
Yeah, we don't have no way.
Yeah, but we got these two, and then we...
I can go over something soon, like...
Yeah. Another thing is that, that the board, which, you know, hats off to them, people, is they're going to do a bi-monthly meeting, which is gonna make their recommendations more readily available to this council. Instead of waiting for a month, getting the next recommendations in two, one to two meetings, all of a sudden, you're looking at a monthly term, that's not good.
Do they, do we have to have somebody on our council on that?
Well, it's part of the problem, and I will be making as much as I can out there, but anyway.
Why don't you just, we get on board?
I can't be on the board.
Dennis was.
Well, I, you know, we're, we're trying to do it the correct way, and that's...
A way of playing from the community, right?
Yeah, I didn't know Dennis was something to worry about.
And another recommendation by a, a citizen that went to a meeting, which the council needs to be aware of, we need to, we have a septic tank out there, which I don't think the Brown Roberts said that needed to be replaced. Yeah. So, the septic tank is, any septic tank you build is gonna have the lifespan, and eventually someday it's gonna pass, and you have to replace it. So, we have a tie-in to the syrup line at the Blue Ridge Factory Company, we own the land up to their, their boundary line, so we can dig our own prints to, to do this. It just makes sense to me to change the septic system, which is outdated, into a, a modern...
I don't have a talk to.
I am, I'm looking at you.
I've got input on all this, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Ian's been on this, believe me, he can't get any by now. But anyway, the, the airport, we're proud of the airport's progressing, we have another meeting coming up in October, and we'll be heading for Springfield for a day, and it's just a good, a good item for, for Benton. And people who travel in, in aircraft, not too expert, I don't think the president's rejected land out there, but the smaller aircraft, you know, they, they need fuel, and we need to put on, we need to set up a website about the Benton Airport, and, and tell people that they can look up the parameters of the airport, where it's located, what we offer, and probably get into the twenty-four hour service of the, of the airline fuel. So, that's, that's a recommendation made by the advisory board. Do you think anybody have any...
I'm Matt Harrison, I'm on that board.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, man.
Possibly, I could say something, because I'm sort of part of the discussion.
Well, you are.
You can put a face on aviation with me there. Just a little background, because I haven't formally met everybody. I'm a professor in aviation over at SIU, so it's, it's my lifeblood, I live in one city. All those batter and I questions, so.
We're putting...
But I, I'm at least a hangar out there, so it's, it's real to me, it's, you know, I've devoted my life to aviation, and I'm trying to be a fresh face out there. I know it's, you know, I come from land where things look pretty filthy, and I'm, we're trying to move things to the point where it, people know that it's there. Just a similar story, in Carbondale, I mean, there's people that didn't, don't know that Carbondale had an airport, you know, and I, you grew up in Carbondale, yeah, Carbondale has an airport, you know? But Benton averages about fifteen flights a day. Now, you wouldn't think of that, but it's a major training point for SIU, it's a major destination for other areas like Sparta, Mount Vernon, today have instrument approaches, so it's, it's used in the training environment pretty heavily. You guys have a very unique situation we are with red light. It could be a destination. Pilots, rich pilots like to fly places with purpose, so... So, there's very little purpose at that airport terminal. So, the website's a start, hanging the runway. I mean, that's like your welcome mat. I mean, flying over it in the dust, you can't even see a runway, and you should be able to. So, I mean, it's worth investing. Does it mean you'll be able to build a skyscraper there with a giant business? No. But you start at a small scale and have reasons for people to fly here. We're very limited with types of structures and things we can build there. So, if you're pushing for it, you have to consider that type of thing. Destinations like, I know there's a lot of restaurants, but that would be a good, I think it would be a good place for a restaurant. It meets high requirements, pilots like to fly and eat and leave. The fuel thing, that's important. The, right now, Mr. Casey has to meet people, we have to call, it might be thirty minutes, you know, whatever, you know, if you're just transient somewhere and wanna land, you're not gonna stop there because there's no fuel twenty-four hours a day, it's not a published event, so I mean, you're losing fuel dollars and access. Other airports tend to give leasees a little bit of a break, because I'll be honest, I fly to other locations to get gas, because it's pretty expensive here. So, I mean, giving some, the people that are using it, some incentive to stay there. You know, so food for thought. And I know you brought up the, the fueling, those are major safety concerns, so, you know, I know the budget's coming from somewhere else and it's hard to see, because you think it's coming right out of your pockets. So, please consider those recommendations for the replacement parts, because they're, you know, that's what people are flying in there right now for is fuel and that's it, because there's nothing to offer yet, so.
Matthew, no, thank you, I'm glad you spoke up. Another thing you may wanna be, I know if you're in, you are in, um...
Yes.
The aeronautic people have been trying to get some trees cut on either, either entrance of the, the landing strips.
FAA designated. Just go back to that, the airport's governed by IDOT and the FAA. Since it's federally funded, you can't just do whatever you want out on the, but things on the not runway sites, like if you wanna hold events, you don't have to close the airport. So, I mean, you, you can do those kinds of things out there. I don't know if the power grid will handle it, but, I mean, there are options with that kinda stuff.
Yes. But the trees, we've been trying to get, we, the meetings of people, they're trying to get the trees cut, because it does affect the, the twenty-four inch...
Twenty-four inch, right.
And, and there's been approval given instead of Illinois, and we're waiting on them to do what they said they're gonna do.
Okay. The other question I have is, it's been in a state of disarray and I'm coming in with fresh eyes, so, you know, I seem very organized, stuff, and come to here, you know, it's typical small town. I would like to put together some type of operational spec manual, so people know the chain of command, you know, like, for example, the garage, I mean, that thing was open for a month. You know, if that was my hangar and my hundred thousand dollar airplane's in there, that should be fixed, you know, there shouldn't be, like you said, eighteen steps for that to happen. I don't, I don't know what Mr. Casey's doing, but I saw that, and, I mean, it scares me because I'm a paying member out there and I have stuff on the other side of the door that, you know, it, it's not protected otherwise.
He called.
So, I'd like to see how, some progression for that, so there isn't, you know, you shouldn't have to wait for weeks.
He should, he should've got it fixed.
Well, it is now, but...
But he didn't wanna call the people here from where they come, wherever they come from, because they charge too much money for travel.
Well, I, I know he's cautious with the budget, but it's, is a leaseholder and knowing that it's federally funded, you know, that it should be a non-issue song. I'd like to improve that process, you know, he leaves, you know, somebody else can come in there, I don't even know what, what to begin with.
Matthew, as far as we're concerned, I'm speaking to a board and I shouldn't do that, but as far as we're concerned, we're, we're glad you're on board.
I appreciate it.
And we want you, we, we want you to do things like you've been talking about, okay? I, I think you have leverage to do that. So, we'll get you a third member.
Okay. Suggestions for that, I, I think it's, personally, I think it should be maybe somebody in a high school situation, like a science teacher, you know? I don't, I don't have plugs in them, but selfishly, being a STEM topic, you know, with education, where all federal money's gone, that would be a very good plug for between aviation, the idea in a, an engineering standpoint, transportation and a, a local school, you know, selfish, you know, I'm putting my SIU plug in there, but I, I think that's a good relationship, because we can have events out there that are aimed at, you know, so if anybody has suggestions, I know they typically look for recommendations, so that would be my...
Did you come up with that yourself?
Well, I, we're, can't meet outside of these things legally, so, you know, it was another, other discussion.
I had made the same suggestion to do it.
But it's, it's a good suggestion.
A science or math teacher.
So, it's, you know, that's, you can formally say that.
Anyway, I thought, I thought maybe we were the same vibe, Dan.
Well, it was a lot of discussions and that was the best one, it really is a good idea.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we need a, a motion to actually accept the recommendations of the Benton Municipal Airport Advisory Board, and then the, the third person will be seated, hopefully within thirty days.
Got a question, number two.
Sure.
Manager report runway identifier light system is disperated handling night landing.
Yeah.
Does that come through the plane or does that come from the...
It's controlled remotely through the aircraft.
So, he says there's a trouble with it, we had a guy go and look at that.
Why, that one was, now, that's a sticky one, because that was found by the feds.
But he was...
Oh, is they do, um, account type like...
He was told it, it's, it's in the plane. The problem is in the plane, they're not pushing or button or whatever.
That I don't know. It's, it's controlled from the aircraft, but the system may not, is not responding to it.
We need to, we need to look at that and see for sure, because the electrician told me that, that Charlie told me, it's, it's done from the plane.
Okay.
So...
Well, no, it's remotely controlled from the plane, but at the receiving end, I'm DeBran is picking it up.
Right. He told him that, that the guys weren't flipping him on, so, I don't know.
I believe the way I understood it and Matt struck me that, that Charlie said it's an issue that we need to...
But, that's what he said, I, I don't know the reality of what's inoperative, inoperative, but... I mean, every aircraft should be able to use it.
Yeah, that's what he said.
They're not, so it's probably ground them.
I'll be, I'll check on that, thank you.
Mr. Geralia?
Yeah.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Breckin?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Yes. Give Matthew, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any, um, which one is this? Old business?
Um...
Well, I got two there.
Thank you, George.
Okay. He's all right, he's... You know, we have the old business.
Yes, I do. It's, um, it's in regard to the, to Resolution nineteen thirteen, which was passed last session, and it's in regard to the IMRF, and I would like to, we need to do a new resolution, Mr. Malkovich, or a different one to include...
I don't know what's coming again, but I don't know what you're talking about.
There you go. To include any other commissioners that would like to participate in the IMRF. I'm the only one listed on there.
That's how it was passed, so, I mean, if somebody else wants that, we can do another one, but this one is...
We need to do a new resolution and not amend that one?
If somebody else besides the finance commissioner is requesting to participate, then we can do another one. If they all wanna participate at the same time, then we can do that as well. What was adopted under nineteen thirteen was for the finance commissioner to participate.
Okay.
Uh, new business?
Yeah. I said at the last meeting, I was gonna go around and look at junk cars.
Yes.
I went from Washington to Reed to Ducoing, fifth, sixth, fourth, all of them, picked up nineteen cars. No license plates, stickers expired in oh-five, oh-four, some didn't have plates on them, that nineteen. So, the, the police officers is getting, Mike Andrews is splitting them up to find out where they live and who they are. So, what we're gonna do is give their addresses, David will give them a letter for seven days if they don't take care of it, the police have gone in and not a good ticket for them. And then, and that's just that part of...
Yeah, what, what happens if you pick a strip from those days?
Uh, they'll, they'll give them the ticket and then they'll have to, see, Tom probably have to go to court unless we do this ordinance thing that I've been talking about.
Very few questions, I hear? I think it's very good, Don, thank you. This is very good.
Well, there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of cars, okay?
Correct.
There's one right off of, uh, North Main, Mike's probably cutting the...
We were talking about the increase of the hundred per dollar tag, we think there'd be more, so we're kinda...
And if they wanna get rid of them, I talked to Joel Savage in West Frankfurt, he will come and get them all, and he'll file for the, the title for them.
Thank you very much. Ship it away at the twenty-eight-five, aren't you, Don? Ship it away. Thank you very much, Don. Any, anybody else? Okay, Matt is in the audience. If I have any comments?
Yes. Cindy Britton.
Yes, sir.
Speaking about the cars and the, the properties themselves that need to be demolished, what is the process like for a car, they're, they're given a ticket, but are they, what's going to happen if they don't pay that ticket? Is there going to be a lien against property? And if they don't own the property, what are you gonna do?
Are you talking about cars or property?
Cars.
If, if you've got a car, that's visible off the main street.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, David. You, you've got to have a sticker on that car. And if it's in an old parking area, you've gotta get it off the street. Is that right, David?
That's fair assessment, yeah.
But then after, if you don't get a sticker and put it on it, some, I looked at one year, they had a sticker from oh-six, right on...
It's in your backyard.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you, I mean, how do you...
I think it's...
Make the individual get rid of the car, or make them pay the fine?
They'll pay the fine, then we'll go to court.
Make them pay, pay fines for it. What about the yards that are, that are this high? I would like to see a list of those properties. I understand cars is a problem, I understand homes need to be demolished and you have to find the funds to do that. What about all of the properties that the yards are this tall? What have they, what has been done about all of those? I would like to see that process, I would like to see, um, when you put that pink sign in that yard, pretty soon the grass is higher than the sign, what's done about it? Do you also give them a fine and do they pay it?
Normally, we put a lien on property, it's two hundred dollars per lot, so if you mow the thing five times, that's a thousand dollars in the lien, so they sell the property somewhere down the road, they just have to pay the lien, send it in. And I go out every week, I keep a list of everything I post, we mowed three thousand dollars worth of yards last month. I don't know what yards you're talking about, higher than the sign, but I, I'd be glad to hang out with you, but don't tell me to go down the railroad tracks there on Railroad Street and mow that, because the city's not gonna mow the railroad property, that's not gonna happen.
Well, speaking of that, why hasn't the railroad mowed all that property? Where's their...
That's a good question.
Where is, where is their fine?
I can answer that. The railroad got into it with zoning, not the last zoning, the zoning before, and caused a bunch of problems, and they said they'd never do that to Benton, never.
But they're running through Benton, I, I mean, how...
I, no, that's what happened. Am I right, Brett? Did you hear? They did. She made a man that she faced with that fit.
So, so what if, what if the properties aren't owned by the person that is in there? Do you then put the lien against the homeowner? Like if it's rental property, how do you handle that, Dave?
Put the lien against the real estate itself.
Okay.
And so whoever owns that real estate would have a lien against it, whether it be a dead person, estate, or, you know, joint tenancy, husband and wife, whatever. But, now, the problem is with a lot of these properties, people die, they're not owning their yard, theirs aren't going to yard, and so now they're being sold for taxes and then when the Franklin County trustee buys them, because nobody else will, because it was the worst condition in the world, and then nobody bids on them, and, you know, the Franklin County trustee's stuck with it, and we can't, we can't enforce a lien against the Franklin County trustee, because that's a governmental entity. And if Steve Walters from Aziz Property buys it, we put a thousand dollar lien on a five hundred dollar worth piece of property, you know, we'd be lucky to deflect here three hundred bucks from the guy, because he's never gonna sell it for a thousand bucks to clear the lien. So, you got all these, you know, I got a piece of property where somebody is dead, I'm not gonna waste seventy-five dollar recording fee to put a lien on, on the property, but if I see a for sale sign on that thing, it's gonna pay off real quick. Put that on five lots out here, this northeast of the hospital, we got twelve, we got five times two, one thousand dollars if they're it sold. About fifty-six apartments out there. No questions asked.
The negligence of the people and then the hardship of some other people, skill health or age or, or whatever.
Right.
It costs the city a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And if I live next to them, that brings down my property tremendously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, it's pretty crazy. Um, okay, my next question, um, and I'd like to thank the, the current board for, especially you, for trying to reduce some of these costs. I mean, um, you know, it's getting leaner and leaner every year. Um, and if you can afford to have a real nice swimming pool, you should be able to afford the water that goes into it, I'm sorry, you know? Otherwise, dig a pond and you don't have to worry about it, you know? And my next thing, um, and I'm gonna let this drop after this, but Ian, we're back to you. Last, the last board meeting, the first board meeting I've ever been to, I asked you about the full-time maintenance guy, and you informed me that you looked, that you got three or four applicants and you looked at all of them, interviewed them all, and then you and the superintendent decided on the individual. And right after the meeting, I called you over.
Who's that?
Because a gentleman came up to me and said, I turned in my application, I was one of those three or four, never got an interview, yet I have all the experience that was necessary for the job. And you said to me and to him, well, I was given the application that I was to review.
Well, they narrowed it down from there, so like I said, if it wasn't listed on that application, I'll have to revisit his application, you know, because I can't speak without seeing it in front of me, but...
But this gentleman put in his application and did ask nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars in, in Southern Illinois fees to advertise this for three days. He put in his application, he had the experience, and whether he was hireable or, or workable or not, I don't know. But he did as requested, and yet he didn't get interviewed, but you said you interviewed everybody that put in their application, so...
I'd have to revisit it.
It has to be transparent from this point on.
Yeah, I'd have to revisit his application, saying, I mean...
But I am telling you, two months prior to the gentleman that you hired, he was to be hired. So, you know, the good old boys thing needs to do this.
You'll learn in this, in this line of work, I mean, you hire, I guarantee you when Bob was hired, did Bob know anybody? Because if you say no, then...
Put on a part-time basis.
Because I guarantee you when Bob was hired, he probably knew somebody, I, I won't bet.
I don't...
I would, but any...
I can't say, maybe, maybe he did, he didn't.
But I mean, that's the thing, it's like, no matter what, no matter who I pick in these positions, I've got a half dozen happy over here and I've got a half a dozen mad over here. If I pick Kennedy D, I'm gonna get the same thing back and forth. It's not able to please, but you know what? I truly think, you know, I was elected to this position, that was my choice, let it fall down on me, that's fine.
Yeah, and that's fine. Yeah, and that's fine, and it's dropping.
You know?
I mean, I'm dropping.
And that'd be great, because the thing is, is no matter who I hire, nobody's gonna be happy. I could hire one of your best friends, but then I'd have John Doe over here ticked off of me, and then I could hire John Doe's best friend, he'll be ticked off of me.
Well, um...
But the good old boy's system is...
The thing is, if you were to interview all four applicants, you'd, you'd fake.
I just wanna know, I mean, do you have a hiring background?
Yes, I do.
Do you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, I mean, next time we hire somebody, I'd like to get with you and see what you look for in your candidates, that way I could curve, maybe...
Not a problem.
I would love to get with you.
Not a problem, at all. And my next question is that, um, the guys are all in unions, and so when you have a water main break, um, they're all called out, and half of them refuse to come in. Um, they may be out of town, but they may be drinking a beer, watching TV, and they refuse. How do you, how are you going to handle that going forward? Because like the water main break on Maple that, it was days and days.
Absolutely.
You know, these guys wear out after so many hours of wa, of, of being in water, and yet you got others sitting at home drinking a beer, and they refuse to come in.
We've had a lot of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Actually, we've had a lot of that, I mean, we could, we could throw, I mean, and all use your husband, for example.
Okay.
Al could've came out and helped us.
He didn't work here anymore. He retired.
So, but I mean, he would, he could've still helped during the water breaks and after, out there, so...
He's worked on ninety-five percent of the water main break.
So, I mean, that's the thing, like...
But when I, when I was the manager, and a union was involved, the most senior per...
I mean, we're just, we're still trying to get process figured out.
The most senior person got the first choice, and you went down to the least senior. But at that point, if none of them wanted to show, then the least senior on up had to show.
I've worn it during these water breaks, I think it's all hands on deck, I, you know, I think they all come out, you know? Not everybody can be down in that hole, but I mean, it's, it's really a team effort. And that's just not water or sewer guys, I mean, I'll, I'll probably go on Rachel, she brought us up, refreshments, you know?
Yeah.
And everything else.
And I understand that, but...
You know, the fellow commissioners up here, and the mayor, and everybody was checking young, so I mean, it was really a team effort, so...
But my, my, my question is, when you only have two or three that will come out, and you have a major water main break, then how are you going to change things to make everybody become responsible?
You know, what two or three, because I mean, we had Bart, we had Bayless, we had, you know, we had Craig and Jason out there, you know, we had Justin out there, I mean, there was one that wasn't there, I mean, from my understanding, wasn't around that weekend, so, I mean, I think we had all people from this department out there.
Well, okay, okay.
So, so I don't know who I'm missing.
That, that isn't the norm. That is not the norm.
So, I don't know who we were missing when you said there's only two or three, because from my understanding, we had all...
No, I said, no, I didn't say two or three came. I said it's normally that two or three will agree to come, and the others are unavailable. So, using the union as a tool, is there a way to say, you know, call the most senior guy and say, "Hey, you know, do you wanna come?"
They do that, normally, when you're managing.
But then down at the bottom, when nobody says they want to come, then you require those from the top, from the bottom up to start coming. So, not everybody ha, is worn absolutely out by all of these water main breaks, because, you know, it's exhausting.
Well, you'll notice, like, remember we had the water break over here on South Main,